I call the order, special order. I call the order of special meeting for April 10, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Boerthwick?
Here.
Mr. Casey?
Here.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Present.
Ms. Fox?
Present.
Ms. Merkel?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mrs. Gianni?
Present.
Mr. Holmes?
Present.
A- present.
This special meeting has been called for the purpose of general legal counsel and special education legal counsel and has been duly advertised. Public comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe Gahouli?
Hi, my name is Joe Gahouli. I live at 18 Merle Street in Scranton. I come to the most meetings when the contracts are up and just to see how it's affecting the taxpayers and I have an interest in government my whole life. And one of the things that I found out about the contracts over the last several years, it seems that the contracts are given to, out to people that live in Lehigh Valley, just as a coincidence. And why? I've looked into it extensively and I think I know why, but I'm not going to get into that. But I know that the legal firm contract is up now. It's my understanding they're pretty much all the same, their proposals. But Joyce, Carmody, and Moran are local entity, as were, when the, I believe they call them construction, whatever, as were Quandrell and Cristority when they submitted their lower bid. And that was with the situation, I believe, with the reconstruction and all the stuff you guys had to do. And I think the third one was the bus contract, which was maybe the biggest nightmare I've ever seen in my life when it comes to government. I was totally, absolutely blown away by the incompetence. And again, I'm not going to blame the school directors, but at that time, probably the administrators. So when I came to the meeting the other night, I was shocked when Director Gianni informed everybody here that you didn't even have the contract in hand. Now, I'm going to bring that back to the administration. And why? Why didn't you have it in hand? And why is it brought up at the last minute? And why are people coming to meetings when something's supposed to be on the agenda, yet it gets tangled? This was a nightmare. And I'm not blaming directors. You know, I am not. It's just disturbing to me that this huge school district, the biggest in the area, is what I consider somewhat incompetent. And again, I don't think, I think you guys have a lot going on. I'm not going to be critical here. I got really concerned about the Gil Martin issue. And, you know, that was just blown off. And then I guess you accepted a resignation. And that needs to be transparent. Everybody knows that the existing lawyer reached out to the prosecutor in the case, or the prosecutors. It's all over town. I'm not saying such that's not, people aren't aware.
We, Mr. Gahouli, we only have resignation letter. Nothing has been presented to this board of any other way.
Okay, but I thought it was accepted by the board of the resignation letter.
Yes, any board member can submit a letter to resonate.
Okay, I would suggest that John Freud, your attorney, was in contact with the prosecutors. And if you guys paid him, then that could get through a right to know. And I'm not going to go any further on that.
Thank you.
I just feel that transparency is so important in government.
Mr. Gahouli, I'm superintendent. I will always take onus and responsibility when something's wrong. I don't hide behind it. There was a mistake on Monday night. It was something that shouldn't have happened. I put corrective action process to the board by 6:00 a.m. in the morning the next day. I will own when something's wrong. I'll never hide behind it.
Great for you. And I'm just bringing it to the administrative.
Absolutely, 100%. I will accept when something is done wrong.
And let me tell you something. You guys all give your time to directors. You volunteer your time. You take a lot of hits from a lot of people, including me right now. But I think things could be run a little better. And it's time that we bring contracts, if they're comparable, back to Scranton, rather than, every single contract I know has come out of Lehigh Valley.
Thank you.
Superintendent Keating, can you explain the email we got Sunday with the contract and what the changes were? The only changes that were going to be made?
So there was a contract that there was, and I have to watch. I don't want to violate any kind of privilege. But there was a privileged document sent to the board that outlined changes. There were formatting things that had to take place. That formatted document was forwarded and it should have then been further forwarded to all the board members, and it wasn't. As I put in an email to the board, I'm the superintendent of the school district. When something's wrong, I need to own responsibility for that. Whether it was my responsibility or not to forward it, I should have followed up and made sure that document was forwarded properly. It didn't happen. And I already put steps in place to make sure that in the future that doesn't happen again. But transparency, never going to sit up here and I'm never going to tell you something different or try to give you a runaround.
But the details didn't change. It was just the formatting of it, correct?
Formatting, yeah. There was formatting in letterhead. There were some other things that had to happen. But I can't disclose what was in that. That's confidential.
Got it.
Aaron, I just want to tell you one thing, and I won't be lying on this. But it means a lot to me that you made a mistake and you owned up to it. And a mistake, Bobby Kennedy once said, "A mistake isn't a mistake until you fail to correct it." And right now, I'm very proud of you. And I'll be real quick on this. But as everybody knows, I was in Atlanta. And the one thing that I found out in Atlanta, and it shocked the living hell out of me, was the average term of a superintendent is 3.6 years. Aaron, I hope that we possibly could triple that.
Well, Bob, I'll be 60 then. So, so everyone knows I'm 50. Christine, if you want to put that in the paper again, feel free.
I just want to let you know how I feel.
Thank you. All right. First action is, um...
Is this a public comment?
No, we, did you close?
No, I only have one person here. I didn't remember if it was a sound or something.
Always, good.
You can speak.
My name is Barbara O'Malley. I was here on Monday night discussing my objection to Joyce, Carmody, and Moran getting this contract based on the fact that I feel they're meddling in the Scranton School District, excuse me, the Scranton City Council meeting, or race. I'm not certain why. Haven't been able to determine that. But I would still like to ask, based on the contributions from Larry Moran, who's a partner in this law firm, that Director Casey has received $1,500 that he recuse himself from this vote first and foremost. I don't think it's appropriate that, again, a partner in this law firm gives you $1,500 and you're voting for this contract. I would also like anyone else to recuse themselves who has anything to do with the Scranton City Council race. And that's, that's what I want to say tonight in regards to this. Now, what Mr. Gahouli behind me said in terms of where a firm is located, this firm of Joyce, Carmody, and Moran is located in Pittston. Another reason why I was concerned is to why Mr. Brendon, excuse me, Attorney Brendan Fitzgerald decided to write a letter about conflict of interest in, again, Scranton City Council meeting. There's a lot of unanswered questions about that. But one thing is clear. You did receive contributions. They're on your...
I'm not denying it. May I ask you a question?
Sure.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
My question is, are you on the municipal recreation board?
All right, the first motion up is vendor relations.
Okay. Motion to approve special education legal counsel. I saw move.
Second.
On the question?
Um, I have a question. Attorney Katz, thank you for being able to get back about the insurance question today. Being as we are on tight time and such, I was trying to put my questions together. So I'm sorry. Thank you for balancing this with your work schedule and everything. I do have a question. The motion states for a start date of May 1st, but I did not find a start or end date in the contract. Is there a reason why that isn't a part of the contract? The RFP stays through June 30 of 2028. The motion stays starting May 1st, but the actual contract has no start or end date listed.
Is it agreed upon term?
The school code is fine at any time. So now we'll start getting motion now. The contract...
So the motion will cover it? Correct. Okay.
And then what about the end date?
Calendar years 25 to 27. Oh, 28, sorry. So...
Yeah, so this doesn't, okay. This says the rates will be increased by. I was just also comparing it to our current legal services contract, which clearly had an end date listed. And that's why we were able to put it on the RFP tier list, because it had that end date. I just want to make sure that that carries over.
So 2028 is the last date that's listed here in the paperwork?
Yes.
However, the PA school code clearly states, and I'm not an attorney, so stop me, that you can end legal services and start legal services at any time.
Right, that I understand. But that's why I wasn't understanding, just because the dates previously were included in the contract, in this contract, it doesn't. And then also, just in past history with us, I think that was one of the complaints from the Auditor General. I clearly understand this could be different because it's professional services. But to forget the exact reason that we were able to add this to the tier, because we had the clear end date, it just concerns me that it's not listed in the contract.
Again, 2028 is the last increase that is there. So there would be no increase beyond 2028. But the PA code supersedes everything, saying that you can start and end legal services at any time. So what I, and again, I'm looking to Noah because I don't want to speak wrong here. This shows salary increases to 2028. So in 2029, if they were still, there would be no salary increase unless a new term would be negotiated.
It's certainly being negotiated three months from now, a year and a half from now, six years from now.
However, even though 2028 is in this document, the PA code supersedes that, that there is no time limits on contract.
Right, that all I understand. I'm just saying, like, our King's Pride contract did have through December 2025 listed. So I wasn't understanding why there was, weren't dates listed. And then also just confirming then, so does the motion supersede the contract? Or, because the contract, that's all I want to be sure is, we request that you execute this letter as soon as possible so we can commence work. So I just want to make sure that that may first date on the motion is what would supersede any work. Because the contract technically doesn't have any words at all for start or end dates.
Correct. And I wouldn't use the word supersede. I think they're ready to jump into each other.
Okay.
So the motion sets the start date for, for school funding. And there's technically no end date. You can increase both at any time and change legal services at any time.
Right, that I understand. So, but at this time, we're comfortable having no end date, even though our previous one had an end date listed.
Yeah, I'd like to just ask Dr. Keating and Mr. Laffey, is it your recommendation that we proceed with this contract with no start and no end date?
Well, that you have a definitive start date.
No, I'm just asking for your recommendation on this contract in front of us.
Because this was vetted by a legal motion, I am comfortable with this, as this was written.
So this is your recommendation?
Yeah. As comfortable as it was written.
Thank you.
It was not, it was vetted through legal.
Mr. Laffey, is it also your recommendation to continue with the contract with no start and no end date?
He...
I recuse myself from this process.
On the 24th of February.
February 24.
Okay, thank you.
The last question I have on this, that is, what you just stated about the hourly increases, if you look at the contract, the retainer cost is not listed for 2028. It's only listed for 2027. So can we confirm that?
So it will remain the same?
It will remain the same if there's no increase.
No increase, okay. So, okay.
So then I would just ask Mr. O'Donnell the same question. Is it your recommendation to proceed with a contract with no start and no end date?
Yes, I would say that, on the advice of Attorney Katz, we can proceed with it.
Thank you.
So I understand, so you're saying that because it could be renegotiated at any time, although 2028 isn't listed on here, you would assume it would remain the same. But then at any point, that could be negotiated by the parties, correct?
Correct. I mean, same thing with the hourly. If no 2029, as Dr. Keating said, if there was no end dates, I'd rather have it before.
Okay. No, I appreciate the answers. I just had concern with the past things that we've been scrutinized for here, not having a clear start and end date on a multimillion dollar contract. To me, as a director, that does make me uncomfortable, no matter if it is at the will of the board. My last comment will just be, Mr. Gahouli, thank you for speaking. I definitely agree with you. And I would just like to make the point of where I stand as a director throughout my research and my homework. You said if comparable. And there were four problems we were told to judge this off of. It was experience, expertise, cost, and best interest of the district. And at this time, the firms that we had in front of us, the experience and the expertise were far different. And I'm not saying that's to each person to determine what they believe. The way that scale themselves, you know, is the local more important than the higher experience and expertise? That's to each person to make their decision. For me personally, with the vast amount of special ed cases that we have and just legal costs in general, I more heavily weigh the experience and expertise. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I call for the vote.
Anyone else want to speak?
No, this one.
Mr. Or, your call.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
No.
Ms. Merkel?
No.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Gianni?
No.
Mr. Boerthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Five affirmative, three negative. Motion passes.
Next motion? Motion to approve general legal counsel. I saw move.
Second.
On the question?
I guess I'll just say that I won't say a lot. Just, in my opinion, there was an obvious difference between the two final firms in terms of experience. And I'm disappointed that our staff and our kids won't have access to the resources that they do now. I'm looking forward to being on the record with my vote.
On the question, I just want to clarify briefly. I'm, at this point, eager to work with a new firm because we need to work together. I hope you appreciate the fact that I am an elected official who just wants to do my due diligence and do my job. I do want to clarify that I do not have any personal vendettas. I just need to ask my questions. There were a lot of questions that I asked to our special legal counsel, as well as some of my colleagues. And I think that's a testament to just making sure that all questions that are even asked to me by taxpayers are some of the questions that I had too. So I will only ever try to do my best job as an elected official, and that's it. I am a mother to three young children. One is currently in the district. I only ever want what's best for this district and for everybody in this community. And I will never waver from that. So if someone wants to speak negatively about me or make things seem different than they are because it fits their own agenda, then so be it. But I will never change who I am. And I'm always willing to work with everybody. So thank you. And I hope we can continue to move this district forward.
Just, I'll just follow up on Director Fox's remarks there just briefly. I have received criticism for asking questions throughout this process. I did reach out to Attorney Katz. We did pass a motion just last week. I think everybody was in agreement that we were going to hire Attorney Katz and we were going to make him available to us to ask our questions. So I think that that was a very smooth process. I appreciate that I had that resource. And I do think that asking those questions and doing my due diligence throughout this process has helped us to significantly lower the cost in our negotiations with the firm that we are engaging with. So I actually think I've saved the district possibly tens of thousands of dollars with, by doing my due diligence in this process.
Who else?
Yeah, I'll speak. So, I wrote something down. Normally, don't write things down. But, you know, over the past year, we have big decisions, whether it was the superintendent decision, the assistant superintendent decision, now this decision. We have done a process, whether RFP or other, you know, hiring processes that I thought have been excellent. They've been above board. There's been a lot of time and effort put into it. Examining some of the questions and being involved in some of these situations for those other two, again, hiring the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, it can come across as some questions that are asked and some, some questions that are asked, or even like examining the legal bills, like we talked about. It seems to me, rather than allowing the process to move forward in good faith, some people are more focused on ensuring a particular individual or a firm does not get a contract or get a position. I don't understand why it has to be this way. You know, we asked, we talked about the legal bills. As of March 31st, our special counsel has billed us 40, over 46 hours, which has cost us over $8,000. And that doesn't even include the April's bills. All right? The situation in these, in these decisions has created an atmosphere on the board that it's, that if I've experienced that, is unprofessional. There's everything from rude comments to each other, to heated arguments. And it's been a very unprofessional environment that I've encountered in handling these processes or being a part of it. And I just ask, why does it have to be this way? You know, with real life changes, or, sorry, real life challenges that are facing our districts right here in Scranton, I can't understand why we act like this in this behavior. Why can't we direct this energy and passion towards what actually matters? Like improving education, supporting our students and staff, or the infrastructure of our district? Why aren't we asking this many questions about the gang or safety issues that are affecting our schools every single day? Instead, we have, you know, questions being asked or our special counsel is directed to watch YouTube videos from 2018, and we're being billed for it. Okay? So this, right now, we're at $8,000 for this process. And I even haven't seen April's bills yet. So I'm assuming it's going to be, if, the same or even more. So it's time for us as a board to refocus our energy on what truly matters, our students, our staff, and the future of public education in Scranton. We owe it to our community to rise above personal agendas, act with integrity, and lead with purpose. So after this is all over, I hope you all can come together and just keep focusing on what matters, and that's the children and our community. Thanks.
If I, if I could respond, just because I believe you're directing some of the questions that I did ask. I openly admit, yes, I did ask several questions to Attorney Katz. And I totaled up my total out of that 8,000. It was $1,575. So that, that's my portion. The, the cost of this non-urgent meeting this evening is $1,600. So if we're going to compare, let's compare that. There was no reason we needed to have this meeting tonight. It could have happened at the April 28 meeting. And this firm still could have went into place into May 1st. But because the majority of my directors or my colleagues felt that we needed to have a non-urgent meeting and that that was a good use of school district and taxpayer funds, I'm sitting here tonight. So yes, I did, I did do my due diligence. I think I spoke very clearly throughout this process. I think you know me, Director McAndrew. I'm always going to do my homework. I'm always going to do my research. And I'm always going to ask questions. This was afforded to me. I felt that I had questions I needed to ask. I got those answers. I appreciate Attorney Katz's assistance. I do hope, Attorney Katz, that you will prepare a memo for the board, possibly even for the public at the end of this, so that you can outline this process. I strongly encourage every member of the public to request the legal bills and review my questions. I wanted to speak of these questions on the floor, but I was explicitly told I cannot do that. So I'm, I'm an open book here. I'm very transparent. Here's all my questions. Submit a right to know, and you can see everything that I talked to Attorney Katz about. I have absolutely no problem with full transparency.
I do want to make sure that we are being transparent. It was suggested that we move this, this vote to the 28th of April. And if we're talking about money here, that would equate to an additional $500 per day for Attorney Katz, which would equal close to $9,000. So this meeting tonight actually saved us. It's an additional 1,500. But if we did it the 28th, that would have been additional $9,000.
I'd like to take a minute to speak positively about the process. I think we've actually gone above and beyond. The school code does not require us to even do an RFP. We decided, as a district, as a board, as administration, that we were just going to go above and beyond. So from the beginning, we released, it was, I don't know, August or September, a tiered bid schedule. And we were doing that in the interest of transparency. Everything has been out in the public eye. As a couple people have said, you can, anybody who has a problem can write to know anything. So the process from beginning ten was open. There were firms that applied. We had the opportunity to interview them. And I, and I just want to say, because, you know, my vote is clear. I just voted on the previous motion. Going to be doing so again. And it'll be for Joyce, Carmody, Moran. When I ran, I think, I've said multiple times, it's very important for Scranton to support itself. This is a firm that is based here. There are members who live in Scranton, who've had kids who matriculate through Scranton. They're invested in Scranton. They already have an office in Scranton. They pledged to move their headquarters and build here. So I, and I'm not going to say that that is the sole reason at all. They're a highly qualified firm. I had the pleasure of working with them when I was on the board in 2019, when they were our labor council. They were successful then. our labor council. They were successful then, and, and they have an excellent reputation in the Valley Schools that work with them now. So I am absolutely happy to have a qualified firm that's invested in this area, and I'm pleased to support them.
Mr. Holmes? I've always said that I wanted a firm in due business with people from northeast Pennsylvania. I said at a previous meeting that I'm very upset that this district is sending millions of dollars, not only on our legal fees, but our architectural fees, to Lehigh Valley. When we send money to another area that could be spent here, it means that our local businesses who pay taxes aren't getting the business, the money isn't regenerated, it's a matter of economics. And I will always go for the local people who pay the taxes, who pays the salaries of all the administrators, who's paying our legal bills tonight. I'm 100% for local business. Now, I'd also like to address the comments made by Mrs. O'Malley. Did I receive a $1,500 contribution from Mr. Moran? Yes, I did. Was it legal? Yes, it was. Did I report it? Yes, I did. And I didn't do anything wrong. Now, since our last meeting, well, I'll get to that in a few seconds, but...
Stop, you've got to stay in the motion.
No, Ty, no, I'm sick of being cut off. I need to defend myself.
You don't need to defend yourself.
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay, you're out of order. You need to stick to the motion.
Then I call... Yes, I can, according to Robert's rules, Ty.
I would like to speak still. Bob, our, Director Casey, are you finished? Like, I mean...
Apparently, I am finished.
You can speak, but you do not ask question and answers back and forth with the committee. I told you, that's per the rules of the motion. You can stick to the merits of the motion, we're not doing the Q and A.
I'm, what I'm doing is explaining my reputation. I spent over 28 years serving on local boards, mainly school boards, the Lackawanna County Housing Authority. I was a public official that dealt with many purchasing issues where I spent money. My reputation has never, ever, ever been in question.
Bob, that's going off the motion, I understand that. That's another conversation for another day. We, by the sunshine law, have to stick to the...
Ty.
Listen.
No.
Stick to the merits of the motion.
I call for the vote then.
You can call for the vote, but we're going to let someone else speak. If you don't like that, I don't know what to tell you, I'm sorry.
All I'm trying to do is protect my reputation.
I understand that, but I'm trying to keep us in the sunshine. We cannot violate that.
So I would like to begin by acknowledging the hard work and dedication that President Holmes had put into this process. His leadership ensured that it was efficient, transparent, and fair. He kept each board member informed at every step, working closely with Dr. Keating, Mr. O'Donnell, and Attorney Katz, in accordance with our policies. I commend him for his commitment to make in this a smooth and open process, leaving no room for doubt or misinterpretation. Special thanks to Attorney Katz for his guidance in this entire process. You've been very helpful. Next, I would like to express my gratitude to Attorney Freund and Attorney Huerta for their service to the board and the district. Their dedication and guidance has been invaluable, and I truly appreciate all they have done. I look forward to working with them until the end of their contract. I also want to congratulate the legal firm of Joyce Carmody and Moran, and being the firm up for appointment this evening. Their dedication to this Scranton area and our students is commendable, and we appreciate your willingness to serve in this district, in this capacity. I would like to take a moment to thank my colleagues for their participation in this process. As vice president, I have had the privilege of working closely with many of you over the last few months in this role. It has been an honor to serve as vice president and support President Holmes in leading this board with professionalism and fairness. With that said, I do encourage all board members to set aside any personal differences or past grievances, and focus on making the best decision for our community. As elected officials, our role is not an easy one. We face criticism, social media scrutiny, and public opposition. It takes resilience and professionalism to serve in this capacity. We must be able to rise above negativity, accept constructive criticism, and lead with integrity. No matter how we vote, we will not always make everyone happy. However, it is our responsibility to move forward and remain committed to the best interests of the district. So as board members, we have a duty to do our homework, listen to the community, and make informed decisions based on facts. I have thoroughly reviewed all legal documents related to this vote, and I stand by my decision this evening. With that, I will be voting in favor of this motion tonight. I urge my colleagues to reflect on how we can better respect the outcomes of votes and move forward professionally as a team of nine. Our students, community, and our district deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say, first and foremost, I want to thank Noah Katz. The work that you've done is impeccable and impressive. Thank you so very much for being accessible, informative. God bless you, you've done a lot for us, and we greatly appreciate you helping us navigate through this. I want to say to the central administration, thank you for the work that you've done. When we started speaking about this, I said I wanted this to be an open and transparent process from the beginning. I truly believe 100% that we did this the right way, no doubt. I would recommend anyone that has a question, do the right to know. I will be doing one myself, to collect and share with whomever wants it. Do the right to know, you have a right to see everything. But I stand behind the process and the decision-making of all the directors here. While those that don't agree, I respect your opinion not to. It's called democracy, that is the beauty of our country. We don't have to agree professionally on a motion, but we do need to come together for the sake of the community and work together collectively. Again, we do get beat up in the community. Sometimes, we may do self-inflicted things. We have to remember one thing, it's not about us, it's about the people we serve. Again, we ran for the position, understanding that we're going to get kicked in the teeth occasionally. It's part of the job. We don't get paid, we accept that, we understand that. But again, I want to thank all my colleagues for their work. I look forward to continuing moving this district forward. And I just want to read something before we go. It is important to maintain a clear boundary between personal and professional. As recently I said, this one has separated us. There's not us against them, it's one team. It's one team that may disagree. I think sometimes the public does not understand, you have nine people, you're going to have nine different personalities with nine different versions on solving one problem. What we collectively have to do is find medium ground, and I believe that's where we are. You take a vote, the vote is cast, the vote is counted, tallied, you move on. I always tell people, I have a short memory, I remember a vote and how it went for as long as it takes me to get in my car and start it. I have to move on. If not, you will carry this with you, it will eat at you, and it will disrupt the work that we need to do on behalf of our community. Again, I'm grateful to get through this. Again, I don't believe we rushed, I believe we took our time, and again, thank you to everyone. To King's Pride, I want to say thank you. You came in at a time when we were pretty much down. You came in and saved the day. We were able to get a bus contract, we were able to get, secure that transportation for our kids, and the work that you've done for us is just amazing, and we greatly appreciate it. We wish you the best, and again, thank you so very much. With that, your call.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
No.
Ms. Merkel?
No.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Gianni?
No.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Five affirmative, three negative, motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll move. I'll make the motion. Second.